City council meeting. We're back after our supper recess and we're here for our scheduled delegations. We had three folks let us know that they wish to present to council. And the first up was Rob Petron with CNRL. Rob, I see that you're here. Come on down. Come on down to the center. It's just like The Price is Right. People don't run up with quite the same excitement though, but we're happy to have you nonetheless. Welcome, Rob. I turned it on from here. You're all good.
Thanks, Mayor. City councillors, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I was asked to come and give an update on the oil and gas industry. And I think it might be a little bit redundant in light of the recent election and all the issues and stuff. But I thought it'd be valuable to come and share my perspective and how I see some impacts in the Grand Prairie region where I live and work. I'm kind of here wearing two hats tonight. One on the behalf of the Petroleum Association and the oil and gas industry. And the other one is a landowner resident and a taxpayer here in the city. So I don't know how much time I have, but I'll get through it as quick as I can. So after 43 years of the industry, I feel very honoured and fulfilled that I've had a great career with the oil and gas industry. It's treated myself and my family really well. And it's really frustrating to be in a position that we are right now as an industry and the challenges that we're all faced here in Alberta and across the country. I was asked to talk a little bit about the challenges. I'm not going to belabor the fat a lot. I think most of you watch the news and it's pretty clear some of the challenges we have. But probably first and foremost, one of the main things is access to market. You know, without being able to compete on the world market and stuff, it's really unfortunate that us as Canadians are having to sell our product at a discount. I was looking at prices today in WTI, which is West Texas, is selling at 56.50 a barrel. And here in Alberta, we're selling for 36.33, so $20 a barrel. That's $20 a barrel for every barrel of oil that's leaving this country that we're losing revenues. Revenues that are used to generate funding for hospitals, healthcare, infrastructure, education, everything. And that's really concerning. And you know, without access to world market, we're really being landlocked and impacted. And not only the oil and gas industry, but each and every one of us. And that should be concerning to us. I don't think any one of us, if we ran our own business, would be satisfied selling everything we sell at a discount. So I think it's an opportunity that we can continue working together across the country and support each other in the industry that has provided so much for people right across the country. Regulatory approval processes have been another big issue. And it's something that is concerning to us. It, the bureaucracy and the amount of time it takes to get any types of approvals. We continue to see missed opportunities where investors are coming in and wanting to invest into Canada here. And they end up going down to lower 48, where the regulatory hurdles are a lot less. And it's a lot easier to do business down there. And we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars every day from companies moving down to the United States and investing money down there. I grabbed some facts here and stuff today. Competing for capital investment is something that we're really struggling with here in Canada. There's 10 foreign-owned oil and gas companies in the last year have left Canada. These are major oil and gas companies that their values, their value of the company's total over $50 billion. $30 billion of capital investment has been lost in Alberta this last year from these companies taking their revenues, they're spending it, but they're not spending it in Alberta or Canada. They're investing in other places in the world where it's more competitive and they get a better return on their investment. No different than any other business would do. And it's really unfortunate to see that companies like this, major companies that have been in Canada for many, many years are pulling up stakes and leaving. The latest news here, two weeks ago, over 600 people let go in Calgary and field offices with Husky Energy. And here just last week, within Canada shutting down and moving their operations down. I shouldn't say shutting down. Within Canada, moving their operations down to the lower 48 in the United States and setting up shop there. It should be concerning to each and every one of us. These are companies that have been in Alberta for many, many years and invest in capital and creating employment and being part of our communities and stuff. And it's a sign of the things to come. And for lack of better words, it's time we in Alberta and Canada better wake up because it's only going to get worse unless we start turning the tables here. We're starting to see more and more, even on the service side of things in Grand Prairie here. I've talked to a lot of the service companies. And it's a combination of if they're heavily financed, they're struggling just to keep their head above water. Companies that are not financed too heavily are doing okay. And we can look around and say, you know, we live, we live in an area that's the Montney and there's a development going on, which is absolutely right. But the fact of the matter is, a lot of the work that's going on here, the margins are so tight that they're running equipment up and down the road. They're not making a lot of revenue out of it. So with not making revenue, they continue to look at decreasing staff and getting as lean as they can and generating whatever profits they can. In tight conditions like this, they're not giving back to the community. We're not seeing near the investments back into the community like would be possible in previous years. So the election, I'll just read this here. It's probably easier just to read. "The elections reflected the diversity of Canadians as well as common ground in which we can build and grow. All Canadians deserve an opportunity to prosper. Life should be affordable where we need practical and we need practical climate strategies. A strong oil and gas industry can contribute to the government's mandate and benefit all Canadians by providing affordable energy prosperity and creating opportunities for indigenous communities. It's time to pull together as a country rather than dividing as what's happening today." So that's really a quick oversight. Like I said, we're very fortunate here, living in Grand Prairie and the Montney in our backyard. There has been capital investment and stuff. But let me tell you, you get outside the, just not too far outside the city limits and it's a different world out there in the oil and gas industry. I was asked to look after the Fairview district. I moved up there. It'll be two years here now in May. And it's a different world in Fairview. That's an hour north of here. And it's a total different world. And from that, I'd just like to shift, switch gears here a little bit and talk a little bit, something that's near and dear to my heart as well, and that's taxes. And I'll relate that back to city taxes as well. But we as oil and gas industry have spent the last five years going around to different municipal districts and cities within the province, concerned about the continuous increase we see on our mill rates and taxes. And it's got to the point now that taxes has become in a lot of our operations, our older operations, one of our largest operating costs. Taxes have actually increased over and above repair and maintenance when it comes to operating facilities. This isn't sustainable. And we have raised our, we have voiced our concern to many, many MDs across the province. Some have heard us, some have not, some have elected to assist, some have not. But it's to the point now, and we're starting to see it in Southern Alberta and also in Fairview here recently, and it's going to continue happening, that we're starting to shut down facilities and take the tax burden down to zero. And just an example, it's a significant impact that just hit the county of Fairview, the MD of Fairview, with what I've had to do in Fairview here since August 1st. And the taxes that they're going to be losing this year as a result of some of the decisions I had to make is significant to the point that they're scratching their head wondering how they're going to survive. So my message to council here is, I think Albertans were very, very clear at the last provincial election that we can't spend beyond our means. We don't have an income problem, we have a spending problem. And I honestly believe that. And we're living as Albertans beyond our means. It's time to roll up our sleeves, in my opinion, like every other Albertans had to do, every business owner's had to do. And anybody that's going to survive these tough times is rolling up our sleeves and making some tough decisions. And I challenge the mayor, city councillors, the city manager and stuff, that those efficiencies can be found within. I'm not talking about having massive layoffs. I'm not talking about the destruction of services. I really get frustrated when I see surveys go out about whatever we produce in taxes, we're going to start seeing an impact on services. I say, I think that's fear mongering. I have to be honest, that's fear mongering. I honestly believe and I've seen it and I can show you in facts, in truth, that if you engage your staff and you engage each and every one of your groups within the city to become more efficient and look at ways of getting to be more efficient, you can reduce significant dollars without impacting people. You can take advantage of natural attrition what we have. But I can tell you personally, we've been faced with this challenge in our industry. And in the district I'm looking at, believe it or not, I've shaved $9 million off our operating costs the last four years. It's been from hard work, but we haven't laid anybody off. I've taken advantage of natural attrition. I've engaged each and every one of my staff to see how we can do it smarter, better, quicker, more efficient, and it's possible. So with that, I would like to thank each and every one of you for your time. I know budget season's coming up and it's a tough time. But as we're seeing at the provincial level, I think we're all in tough times. And I think this is now the opportunity that we as voted people within this community, supporting this community. I hope I'm speaking for the silent majority here. It's time to roll up our sleeves and make some tough decisions and do what's right for each and every one of us in the province of Alberta and the country of Canada. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. Don't take off. We actually get a chance to ask you questions. Yeah, we always tend this to be a dialogue back and forth. And so we have an opportunity for council to ask questions if any of you are entered. I see councillor Bressy's in the queue.
Great. Well, first of all, thanks for coming up. And I think something you said is really true. And that's how much our, not just our governments rely on this industry for their financial wellbeing, but also we've got a significant nonprofit sector that does. In fact, we're about to hear from two different groups that really have people in your industry to thank for a lot of the work they've been able to do. And so that's something that really resonates with me. Something I'm curious about is, I appreciate the call to look for efficiencies and to do what we're doing better. It's well timed when we're a couple of weeks away from budget. Something that we have put a lot of attention to in terms of, we managed to lower residential taxes last year by 4% while also significantly increasing our road budget by just over 20% and while hiring more CMP members and doing more for people with disabilities in the community. So I was really proud of our staff for that. And I'm looking forward to seeing where else we can find efficiencies. And so we're working really hard on costs. But another thing that we've had a lot of conversations about as council is, what's the fair distribution of the taxes we collect? In terms of, as a percentage of the taxes we collect, Grand Prairie's a lot closer to the amount of taxes we collect from non-residential properties compared to residential properties. Usually in most municipalities, there's a much bigger gap in terms of they collect a higher proportion of their taxes from non-residential properties than we do. And this conversation we've had a number of times of, do we want to keep the spread narrower than other municipalities where it is? Which has the advantage that's really friendly for business, but it's also got the consequence of that means our residential taxes are higher. So I'm kind of curious. We're definitely going to be working on spending, working all that. But also as we're figuring out the total taxes we do decide to requisition next year. What are your thoughts in terms of, should we be prioritizing getting the residential bill down to help oil and gas workers? Should we be prioritizing keep getting the non-residential down to help companies? Or should we be going for a belt with the distribution we've got now and be spreading relief equally?
It's a, it's a good question. And it's not an easy answer because if I said focus on residential, the business community would suffer and vice versa. I think the point is, and the point that I was trying to get across, is that you operate within a set income that comes into the, into the city. We need to build our infrastructure, our spending around that. Rather than looking at where we give the money to, let's figure out how much money we have coming in and spend it as wide as we can. And you know, I think, I've lived here in Grand Prairie since 1990. And I think it's always been a challenge that, you know, whether I was on the hospital foundation, the college foundation, whatever, attracting and retaining people in the city has always been a challenge. And it makes it real difficult when we're a northern community like we are and the cost of living here is higher. So the higher we drive these costs, whether it be taxes or city expenses, whatever, the less attractive it is to bring people here. So I think we need to do everything we can to manage our expenses. It's the expenses that we have to manage. And some tough decisions have to be made. It really, it really, it really comes down to that. And you know what? Again, I can tell you from experiences, I've sat with vice presidents and I says, I have no idea how we're ever going to come close to this budget. But you involve the people that spend the money. And I'll venture to say there isn't probably any year around the council here that write any checks. Probably not. Maybe you do. I mean for council. You guys don't spend money. It's the people out doing the work, that's where the money's spent. It's like me, it was my job. I don't spend money. I approve a bunch of invoices for payment and stuff, but I physically don't spend money. But what I've done is I've gone out to the different departments that work for me and I understand where they're spending the money, engage them, and figure out how we can become more efficient. So I think the answer councillor is more in efficiencies than it is where do we start cutting money? Who do we tax more, tax less? Let's live within our means and really strive to live within our means through these tough times. Because it's concerning to me, and we're seeing at the federal level now, that they're, they're starting to refinance our debt. And you know, that to me is just scary. Like, you know, we keep talking about what are we going to leave our future generations? Well, it's pretty clear they're writing on the wall by refinancing our debt. What we're leaving our future generations is a whole bunch of debt that they probably never pay off. That's not fair. That's not fair to my kids, my grandkids, their kids. We should all be concerned about that. We've got to start living within our means. Long answer to a question, but it's a tough one. And it's not easy. You know, I had a fellow tell me once that things are changing around us so fast that if we do the same thing next year as we're doing this year, we're doing something wrong. That's how fast things are changing. And if we think we can go into 2020, do the same things we did in 2019 and be successful, that's the first sign of insanity. Things are changing too fast. And if we're going to survive and we're going to come out the right, the end of this in a better way, we need to be ahead of that curve and we need to respond faster. Long answer.
See councillor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Not a question tonight, just a couple of comments. Thank you for coming tonight. Your sentiment is very timely and as council goes into the budget, I strongly encourage people like yourselves and other residents of the community to come forward and share their message because it's, it's nice to hear things in person and people to take the time and not always just through social media. So I really appreciate you taking the time to come out. And just on a sort of side note, something that you mentioned earlier, and I just wanted to thank you for somebody who just recently retired from the Petroleum Association. Your time and commitment to organizations such as that across the community is very impactful. And the organization, you're bang on when you make the note about nonprofits being less successful because industry isn't successful. And in turn, the relationship between government and industry is key. So thank you for the work that you've done for our region across your many years of volunteering.
Thank you.
Thanks councillor Clayton. Councillor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks for coming in today, Rob. Really, the timing is good, but it's also, I appreciate the message could have, it could have been a little bit more negative. I think it was nice to hear like a little bit globally, but a little bit more locally. But you did mention a couple of things there. I just want to see if there's anything that we can help out with. And one of the ones was, you know, some of the red tape sort of reduction. I mean, the city doesn't get, within our borders, we don't have a lot of oil and gas extraction. But we obviously have a lot of businesses that operate out of here. But we are involved with the tri-municipal industrial partnership and we've got some land out in Hughes Lake that we're trying to get industrial strategies. So is there any suggestions you could make of specific red tape or items that we could help advocate or work with industry on?
I think the message I'd like to leave is that opportunities are going to come up, probably even starting tomorrow. And just the support that we need from the community and the people that are not related to oil and gas to support our industry in any way they can to attract. And I see our premier down in Mexico today and advocating that Alberta's open for business. And you know, at the provincial level, they're working hard to reduce red tape. And that's a tough one too, Wade, because it's just been a compiled mess over the years that it's just got to the point that, that it's just, it's so bureaucratic that the approval process to get anything done is just beyond the wildest imagination. And so it's, it's more for me to take the opportunity to come and try to educate people and some of the challenges we have. And that's really as an industry, what we're really looking is to get the support of the communities we live and work in because it is going to impact each and every one of us sooner or later. If, if things keep going the way they are, it's going to be devastating. And it's going to, the landscape's going to look a lot different than it does today. So there's nothing that's just glaring out with, with the red tape and stuff. You know, the tri municipalities, I think there's been some great work done there in the last three or four years with the MDs and counties working together to designate that land. And you know, shows and opportunities that we can bring in industries that are interested in developing and stuff. But really, the success of the oil and gas in Alberta hasn't been a lot of development when it comes to facilities. Our success has been drilling. That's what we do. We drill for product and we sell it to market. And that's what's concerning right now is, you know, the first indication that we follow and most people follow is the rig counts. And the rig counts for 2020 are even, even going to be lower than 2019. So that's concerning. So it's not something that's going to turn around real quick. So just whatever support we can, we can beat each other because it is affecting people. It is affecting people's employment. It is affecting the communities we live and work in. It truly is. So.
Just on that, then, does CAP have, like I should, I can check their site, but do they have specific red tape reductions that they? I'm just wondering how we could, as a municipality, form for business and work with CAP.
Yeah, yeah. There's actually, our MLA here, Tracy is heading up the red tape production project. And she's the one that's gathering all the initiatives or suggestions, recommendations and stuff. So I can, I can check with CAP and I can find out if we got a summarized list of high initiatives that we're suggesting to the provincial government to tackle. But it, it goes right from access to land, time to get permits to drill wells. You know, to drill a well in, in the, in the area here, you could be talking upwards of 18 months. Well, you know, we, we used to get approval licenses in six weeks. And 18 months, especially in this area here, a lot of it's remote access anyways. That means by the time you get your approval, you're two years out before you can even drill a well. And that's just not acceptable. You can go down to lower 48 and drill a well within two weeks of applying for a license. So we're just so far out of being competitive with our neighbors that, like I said, it's tough to compete. But I'll, I'll work at getting something for you. I can, I can try to get something for you.
I'd love to try to work with you guys as much as I can.
Sure.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks councillor Plot. Councillor Minhaus.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you very much for coming here because I've been talking to you a long time and you've been there business long. A couple of things I got to ask you. One thing you haven't mentioned for LNG, because you're fortunate here in Grand Prairie, we've got lots of gas. Second one, lots of stuff going on this winter, like PPL is building pipeline from Fox Creek to La Glos, La Glos to Dawson. Is that due to the, the Transmontane Pipeline or is LG, or they're just doing it because getting ready for? There must be some good future coming up ahead.
The develop?
Second question will be, why our province shut down the refinery, they're not going to build. They canceled that project.
The refinery? Yeah. So.
With your experience, you will have.
Yeah. So, so first off, let's talk about it. But there was actually three questions I heard. LNG was one. And again, you know, we missed, we missed the first wave of LNG back in 2015, I think it was, with the world to market, the world demand. We missed that market. And the fact of the matter is, I think someday we will have LNG on the west coast and export LNGs. I hope so anyways. The next wave is 2022, so I don't know if we're going to hit it or not. But the LNG conversation has not been a political conversation, so to say, as it is access to market with oil pipelines, TransCanada, Energy East pipelines like that. The LNG is more a conversation around economics. And the federal government actually have had an incentive to producers to assist with a tax rebate to offset the capital of LNGs. And even at that, the economics didn't go around, they would never pay for themselves. So that's one of the biggest hurdles that we're faced is to get these projects economical, that we could see construction happen. There's been quite a few players and there's still one or two that are looking. And it looks like one might go through, which is good. So we do hope and we'll keep our fingers crossed. The first market that'll be impacted by that will be northeast BC. There's a lot of stranded gas there. There's been a lot of development. So that would be the first to start producing there. But some of this pipeline infrastructure that you're seeing going on in Northwest Alberta would assist in transporting our product over there. The majority of the construction and some of this pipeline work that you see going on in Northwest Alberta, it's actually twofold. It's, it's for the continued development as we go on with the Montney because the existing infrastructure is aging and we're having to shut down some of it. So just capacity wise, to manage the capacity with the Montney. But that's just going to serve purpose local to Alberta here. There's a huge pipeline being built and it's partly constructed to take natural gas over to the oil sands. So the majority of the pipeline infrastructure that you see getting built right now is to, to prepare for our own needs within Alberta and stuff and not necessarily export. The refinery conversation is exactly the same. If you look at the economics, the billions of dollars to build a refinery, the capital just doesn't go around. The return on your capital employed will pay, it'd take years and years and years to break even on that. And that's where it's more economical to transport our product out and refine it. And some of our product, believe it or not, that's going out through Vancouver right now is being refined in Indonesia. It's the most efficient refinery in the world. And we're shipping it, shipping our oil to Indonesia, they're refining it and shipping it back to the, the United States and selling it. But you know, the labor costs over there, the, the cost is a lot cheaper than doing it here. So first and foremost, would we get our product to market and fully utilize the existing infrastructure, which is really the Gulf of Mexico, the east coast? I think we can all say it, it's just, you know, some of these policies have been putting in. I just, for the normal thinking person, it just doesn't make sense how you can block tanker traffic on the west coast and you can run tankers up the St. Lawrence Seaway. And west coast is an environmental nightmare, but not the St. Lawrence Seaway. That just, just doesn't make sense to me. So we have our challenges and, and we will continue working with all levels of government to try to work through that, so.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I guess that's your opportunity right there. Thank you very much. I appreciate having you here this evening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
So our next delegation that let us know in advance that they wished to come forward was Ms. Renee Charbonneau. Renee, you're no stranger to council. Come on down. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, council and all of the guests here tonight. You're right, I have a lot to thank oil and gas and the entire Grand Prairie region for. This has been an amazing year for Veterans Memorial Gardens and Interpretive Center. We've actually landed on a name. We now have a logo. We have a building thanks to Horizon North. Vallard Foundations helped us with foundational work. Grand Prairie School Board had some screw piles and we've just, it's just been a network of people working together to do things for as little cost as possible. We've already taken it at our CFEP grant that we were given in September. Our building is paid for. Everything that we're doing is just, it's just been amazing. Smash and Suns. I can't say enough about Brant Tractor. There's so many, so many businesses in this region that have stepped up to help our not-for-profit. It really is rewarding to know that between the school board approving our education programs and we're starting to deliver them into the schools and all of these different businesses, recognizing how important it is that we quit running away from our past, that we face it with pride. We look at how far we've come and that we're able to look at the service and sacrifice of all of these soldiers from our region and put some pride behind it and put some really wonderful opportunity behind it. It seems like every business leader that I've talked to that's gotten involved with our project just believes that we need to remember, we can never forget the service and sacrifice of all of those people that came before us. And the educational opportunity helps provide a future for those who are going to come after us. Every year, the Canadian government creates 5,000 new veterans. We have 658,000 veterans in Canada right now and over 4,000 of them are homeless. Our association has been working with the Homes for Heroes program. Our association has been working with the Homes for Heroes program. And I'd like some guidance on which committees and things like that to talk to about the homelessness for some veterans in our region. Who's been identified? Where can we make a difference? The Homes for Heroes Foundation is willing to work with us here in the North to make sure that through them and the Legion and a few other organizations, we're able to make sure that no veteran in the North is without a place to stay. So that's going to be a really important initiative. Some of the other things that have come up for our our project, like you said, is a relationship is starting to build very strongly with our Indigenous community. Indigenous Veterans Day is a twenty-six-year-old tradition and is being celebrated in Grand Prairie on it for its second time on November eighth. We have a number of councillors coming and I'm deeply appreciative to you, Chris, for taking on the role of being our Minister of Indigenous Affairs this Friday. And councillor Eunice and councillor O'Toole, you guys' support means so much. And our Indigenous community is starting to really realize that this project isn't just a pie in the sky dream, that it's really moving forward and that they are being included from step one. This year, we're blessed to have three levels of the Métis Nation government coming. We have the provincial, the regional and the local government all being represented. We also have representation coming from Sturgeon Lake Cree Nation and from Horse Lake First Nations. So we're really grateful to see that tradition build because that's part of what reconciliation looks like. Reconciliation looks like education, you know, teaching each other about our realities. The biggest thing as a military child growing, I mean, I I come from the Fort Churchill, Manitoba. So I didn't learn a lot of the things that I've been learning through the research of this project. And the more I learned, the more I realized healing comes from education. The less we know, the more fearful we are as a society. The more we know, the more empowered we become, the more considerate we can be of those around us. And when I look at the ages and the countries that these people came from, I want you to think about what Grand Prairie and this region looked like in nineteen sixteen, nineteen seventeen and to realize that this region, since that point in time, has given up over two hundred and forty soldiers. It's two hundred and forty Silver Cross families from this region. And you look at the lives, these people were immigrants that had come here in eighteen ninety-seven, eighteen ninety-eight. And in nineteen seventeen, they're fighting for the dream called Canada. So as tough as things have been on our oil and gas industry, as tough as things have been on our region, this project has resonated with enough people that we have, between gift and kind and grants, we're over four hundred thousand dollars in support this year. We still need more. We will constantly need more, like every other not-for-profit. But the fact that in a downtime, this region is that kind and generous, pretty overwhelming, at least for this girl. And being here is a way to thank not just the council for creating an environment where we have thought leaders and business leaders that are so strong, but also to give us the opportunity to even be able to build a project like this. We've created strong alliance with the Hillside Community Association now. We'll be hosting Motorcycle Mondays and our barbecues for charity from there. We're creating an outdoor kitchen so that Hillside will actually have a place to host block parties and seniors nights and 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 make that a community center for all of us. We have to share in those things, which brings me to the next question I have as far as guidance goes. There is an organization from Sylvan Lake, Alberta called the Flags of Remembrance through Vets Voices Canada. Our city has been given preapproval because of the work that I've been doing and some others to become a Flags of Remembrance city if there is any desire from council. Now, it's a commitment. It means one hundred and twenty-eight sponsors for two hundred and twenty-five dollars. We've got flags and plaques that are are set up. And one hundred and twenty-eight full-blown Canadian flags takes up a lot of space and it's a very visual display of patriotism, of respect. I don't know if there's a place in the city of Grand Prairie that we could do this, but I think that it might be a wonderful team-building exercise with cadets, with Hillside Community, maybe some of the other organizations, because Vets Voices Canada actually shares a little bit of the money. There's seventy-five hundred dollars available to be split through the groups that that go out and and earn the sponsorships. There's a ceremony that around the twenty-first of September, when the flags get lifted, and then a final ceremony on the twelfth of November when they come down. And at that ceremony, the sponsors are invited and they get a specially folded flag and the plaque of the person that they sponsored in memory of. So it's a big commitment. It's almost two months. It's having flags displayed. Vets Voices Canada provides the flags and the poles, but we have to supply the place to do it. And I didn't know if there was any will in Grand Prairie to be, you know, building some of those connections to our military past and our potential military future. And so that's kind of where I'm at.
Thanks for your presentation. I see councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much for coming in today, Renee. Always great to see and hear what's going on anywhere in the public or right here in this council chambers. I just wanted to thank you for bringing up the Flags of Remembrance. I had the opportunity this September myself to be in Sylvan Lake. I have some family members buried in the cemetery there. I always pop by when I go through to Calgary and whatnot. And I was coming back to Edmonton for the AUMA conference and I was blown away by all the flags that were along the highway coming into the city. And then I got to the main Central Park and they were all lined up over there. It seemed like the community members really appreciated it. We're taking lots of pictures by it. We're reading them. I took time to read all of the the little plaques and little Canadian Maple Leaf form. Honestly, though, when I drove into town, at first I thought that I was walking into an election campaign. I thought I was going to see a conservative or the prime minister there. It was really good. I I ended up not seeing any of them, but I did run into the mayor, Sean McIntyre. And so he explained a bit of the project and I said, wow, this is great. And as far as he knew and as far as I know, it's the only place in Alberta currently. You may have more more information on that, but it is quite a brilliant display of flags, patriotism and the sacrifices that our servicemen and women have made over the years. So I I would probably make a motion later on to refer that. Also to your other, to your other item on homelessness, homeless, Homes for Heroes. I know that's been popping up in the news through Calgary as well. We were privy to seeing that from the Calgary Municipal Housing Corporation. They showed us as it was developing and we were talking about municipal housing corporations. So that was really good. But I guess I'm just talking a lot here. One question, I know you said we have to find out a place to to put this. Do you have any idea, like right off the top of your head, where you think might be right? Because in Sylvan Lake, those Flags of Remembrance, they were right up along the highway entering the city and they were also in the Central Park. Do you have any ideas? Are you thinking like perhaps Musquessee Peak Park or sort of an entrance way? I know that we're working on some entrance signs on the west end of town as well as the north end of town. Any ideas off the top of your head?
Well, it would require some, you know, cooperation with the county. But what about up the middle of the two highways coming in? And then maybe on either side of the highway as you enter into Grand Prairie? That was one of the things I thought, because I thought that would be a very impressive way to greet people coming into Grand Prairie. And just a little bit of a a knowledge for everyone. The money that Alan Cameron from Vets Voices raises from these flags actually goes to a a very interesting museum-type project. He himself was a radio personality and TV personality and he's interviewed over nineteen hundred veterans. And he's captured all their stories on video. Now it's time to edit them and that stuff's expensive. And so Flags of Remembrance is helping him fund the editing to get all of these soldiers' stories told. And that's part of the National War Museum's digital collection. So he's working with them.
Okay, that's that's awesome. This is start at least. And before I let you go, I just wanted to send out one comment. You thanked a lot of people in the community for all their contributions to making things happen. And so many times when you're the person driving a lot of the projects, you don't take time to thank yourself. So I'm going to do that. And I want to thank you for your your community-driven passion, your unrelenting desire to make our our community a better place and to respect our veterans and the service of of the time and the sacrifices that they made. And I hope you never stop dreaming and believing in the things that you do because truly you're making our community better every single time you walk in these doors. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Ressi. Sorry, on next councillor Ressi. Thanks councillor Thiessen.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. And thanks for coming in and thanks echoing the thanks for all the work you do. I've never heard of this Flags of Remembrance. Now it's up on my iPad and I look forward to conversations about how we can potentially potentially support that. Something I'm curious about is is tomorrow, we're talking about our affordable housing strategy. And as we've been having affordable housing conversations, there actually hasn't been specific conversation about homeless vets in our region. And I'm not I'm not actually aware of how big, how big a population that is. Do, I know that's, I know homelessness is always hard to count, but do we have an idea of how many homeless vets we might have in our region?
That I'm aware of, it's rumored that we have two homeless veterans here in Grand Prairie and three in Peace River.
Thank you. Thanks councillor Ressi. Ms. Charbonneau, I don't see anybody else in the queue. In terms of our agenda, we deal with delegation business after everyone's presented. So certainly thank you for all the work they do in the community and for being here this evening. Thank you. Our next present group that wished to make presentation to council was a group from Sunrise House, a youth emergency shelter. Kind of seen the routine a couple of times, but if you come down, you just introduce yourselves for council and welcome. We're happy to have you.
Good evening, Mayor Given, councillors. We're really excited to be here today. So my name is Tanya and I've been the executive director for Sunrise House for the past nine years now. And I'm joined today with our board president, Richard Vanderzey. They're hiding in the crowd, but our vice president, Lisa Watson, and our board treasurer, Alison Timothy. I'm excited to be here this evening because what it means is that after years of planning, myself and our board of directors are ready to move forward with the future of Sunrise House and the construction of our new facility. We've weighed many options over the years. We've looked at renovation of our current building, the renovation of existing buildings, various sites. And so at this time, we are confident from the processes that we've gone through and that we have a plan for a building that will meet the growing needs of our community's youth now and well into the future. Sunrise House has been in operation in our city since two thousand and three. And since two thousand and ten, we have supported over eleven hundred. Youth and our current twelve-bed facility has seen over twelve thousand five hundred bed nights. We continue to be the only youth emergency shelter in northwestern Alberta and continue to make youth a priority by ensuring we are always ready for them, no matter the time or day when they when they arrive at our building. Our Sunrise House currently runs three primary programs. Our our shelter program, of course, is our primary one, our family support and reunification, as well as our youth navigator. We truly believe that healthy families are a key to preventing youth from aging into chronic adult homelessness. We cannot change the trauma of our youth or their families have faced growing up, but we can change their trajectory and help break the family cycles they feel trapped in. Our youth navigator ensures that those youth without families to return to are supported in finding sustainable housing, employment or education and continue to work with these youth up to the age of twenty-four. As stated in our business plan that we have submitted to you, this new facility will accommodate the growing volume, capacity, programming, prevention and intervention needs sorry, to our youth in a more suitable space. For those of you who had the opportunity to visit our current facility, you will know that this space is a growing concern for us. Our kitchen table plays host to not only breakfast, lunch and dinner, but also plays host to homework, staff meetings, cooking classes, board games, training, and the list goes on. Much has changed for our youth and our organization over the past sixteen years, but what hasn't changed is our location. And while this location has taken good care of us and given safety to many of our youth, it simply no longer meets the needs of our youth and of our staff. Our staff levels have increased. Partnership provides services on our site has increased. The demand to segregate specific clients from others for periods of time has increased, but our space itself remains the same. A few of the key concerns of our current facility include security, the lack of quiet or private space for our youth. We are not wheelchair accessible and the lack of programming space. Not having private space or individual bedrooms for our transgendered youth or quiet space for prayer or solitude are becoming increasingly challenging as our current facility runs at or near capacity more often than not. I believe that we do excellent work with our youth and it shows in our statistics. Last year, ninety-five percent of the youth who access Sunrise House left us for either home, alternative kinship or some form of a treatment program. And we just know that we can do so much more and so much better. As the current facility is at capacity with no room for growth or land space, land space for renovation, our goal is to build a new shelter to better serve the growing needs of our youth. This new facility will include a double-door entrance to ensure security of staff and youth, ten bedrooms with two beds and four bedrooms with single beds, two of which will be barrier-free. The single bedrooms can then also be used for either male or female or transgendered clients without having to segregate them to a separate floor. So currently, we have one single bedroom in our shelter and it's in the basement, so we really avoid using that. I will also include two intake offices that are secure and soundproof. Open floor common space that includes kitchen, dining and living room space. We really do want to keep that home feel that we have now on that main floor. One quiet multisensory room and one cultural or prayer room. Additional staff offices, laundry, storage space and space for an integrated youth hub and ten affordable apartments to be used for transitional and supportive housing for youth. We are here today to ask the city's support of our capital project. We are requesting a total contribution of five hundred thousand dollars over one or two years. This includes development permits, building permits and an estimated five years of property taxes, leaving a cash request of three hundred and eighty-three thousand. We have been incredibly fortunate to have already received a one million dollar private donation as well as the donation of one acre of land in the Kensington Development. Our goal is to have a shovel in the ground by May of two thousand and twenty. I just want to thank you for your time and for all the support that each of you have given us individually as well as as council over the years. And we look forward to working with you moving forward and welcome any questions that you have on the project.
Okay, thanks very much. Exciting times, obviously, for the organization. Councillor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. A question regarding the potential new facility. And I've heard some sort of discussion around the community in regards to the operational model, potentially accommodating older youth. And so I wondered if you could expand a little bit on that.
So the only area where we would accommodate over eighteen would be in the housing. So the shelter itself would remain twelve to seventeen. We know there's other youth shelters in the province who have moved to a fifteen to twenty-four or fifteen to twenty-two model. But unfortunately, we actually see higher numbers of thirteen to fifteen-year-olds, so that is just not an option for us. And having a twelve-year-old and a twenty-four-year-old within the same shelter is also not. Our housing portion, however, would have options for up to the age of twenty-four. Our priority would go to under eighteen who are unable to sign leases, but there would be that movement. That floor would be accessible separate from the shelter, so they wouldn't actually be going through. So that's where the age piece would come.
And so the 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 new facility that in the Kensington area would accommodate what?
So it'd have twenty-four, twenty-four emergency beds for twelve to seventeen and ten single-use apartments.
Thank you.
Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I have a few questions, so if anybody thinks I'm taking overtime here, please say so. Just a quick question on your waitlist. How big is your waitlist currently for youth looking to receive shelter beds?
We don't have one. So we have have run over capacity. We have put kids on the couch. We absolutely refuse to not have access to youth. So when that happens and we're sitting at that high number, we start planning right away. So as soon as we're down to those, we only have a few beds left. We work with children's services. We may work with families that we're already working with, but we will not turn anyone away at the door ever. So we don't care. We may work with families that we're already working with, but we will not turn anyone away at the door ever. So we don't carry it.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you for that. The other one was in regards to the Kensington area. I know part of the, part of the idea is to get it close to transit and be able to get the kids off to work or school or whatever they need to do. Whereabouts? Now, you did include in your business plan a, a map of where it is. And it looks like there's four different multifamily dwelling sites that are in there. Am I right to, to think that it's going to be on the east side or is that land still to be determined?
That is to be determined. So we're right now working with the landowner to determine exactly where the shelter will land.
Okay, and just quickly, on average, I see it's close to 84th Ave. I know we have transit stops up in, up in that area. Looks like it'd be about, I don't know, four to five block walk at the, at the most to get to Transit Station at that time?
I don't think it'll be that far, actually.
Not that far?
If you look at it, Chris, it's actually at the most probably two blocks to where the transit is. Yeah.
All right.
Roughly where, from where Peter told me he is pretty much wanting to give us the land, it's not that far. Because isn't there a bus stop over beside the, what's that gas station right there?
Yeah, yeah, right outside the fast gas area, close to the post office. Okay, something, I know this is largely undeveloped and we're dealing with ASPs and OPs on it currently. But as this progresses, I would just strongly encourage you to be in contact with our CSD or, or our director, Arlen Miller. Because the more we know and have a heads up on that, the more we may be able to, you know, put in road allowances for future transit or whatnot as that area develops. But it's something for good planning purposes.
Absolutely. Cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks for coming to talk to us. It's exciting, exciting times for our youth, potentially. I'm kind of, something I'm curious about is what's this going to do to your operational needs in terms of, I'm sure that your building's more expensive to run, but also maybe there's some revenue opportunities in those transitional suites. So how does this affect your operational budget when done?
Well, it certainly will increase our operational budget, but it will also increase our ability to do different kinds of programming, as well as welcoming in other programming. So we will have income from the suites, and that was part of the planning around having the suites part of that building. We currently have a transitional house separate from the shelter where we have four beds. But we rent that house, so there's no income at all from that. So that'll be a part of it. And certainly, we're, we're really aware of that, that we're going to be looking at increased operational. So that's been a large part of our planning and with the board and looking at sustainability.
What about with the partnering group? Drug addiction and stuff?
Like with Albert Health Services? Yeah, that'll be around the youth hub. So, and again, that'll come into that programming income. As well, we know that right now we are functioning, we're functioning at 12 beds. So ideally, right now, as we move into the new building, we would do a slow increase. So we won't open up assuming we are going to have 24 beds. But doing that increase slowly as, as our income is generating, as our programming is generating and things like that, and as the need arises. We know from our population, we've got a very young population. So we know doubt we're going to have an increase and we're going to need those 24 beds. Probably within the next five years, we're going to need that. So that's part of that, that sustainable planning that the board is looking at. We just, we want to be ahead of it. We don't want to be at the point where I'm coming in and saying, I'm turning away six kids every night. We just do not want to take that chance of that happening. And that will be where we are in five years if, if we don't look at increasing those beds.
If, if I may. Could you just give me an idea of, so you're, so you're making a $500,000 ask for the city, some gifted guy and some cash. What's the total budget for this project and what other government, specifically government asks do you guys have out there?
So the build is at about four, four and a half million. We have asks also to MD Greenview as well as to the county. Those asks are the same at 500,000. We also have an application into CFEP that we're waiting on, on reply from that. And then, of course, the 1.5 million that we already, that we have. And we also have a sale of our building.
And there's an application for seed funding from CMHC.
I see Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just kind of similar to Counselor Bressi there, just at the end. You guys had mentioned the 500,000 over two years and then, and then you kind of threw out a number of about 380,000 cash. That was 120,000 was coming in, development fees, engineering fees, tax incentives and stuff. I'm just curious if, if the funding wasn't there from, from the city on that. Would the project not go ahead in May or is, or is this, you know, it's going to happen regardless? And this would help you guys get over the finish line, look at, at it happening sooner or?
It's going to happen regardless. I think it just means that we just have to go back to the public again and, and continue on with the capital campaign from private and business again. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming in and giving us this update. So the intention is once the new building is built, the other existing building that you have will be sold? Okay. Would there be a desire to keep that one open or do you feel that you'd have everything under control under the one building?
No, I feel we would have everything we need in the new building.
Yeah, that's good news.
And the, and the building we're in now is aging. So reality is, is it will be costing us more and more of having to either renovate that building or upgrade it. So by going with the additional space as well as that housing piece, the need for our current building will be there.
Excellent. Well, good luck in the fundraising and invite me to the groundbreaking.
You'll be coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a simple one here. I know security in your business plan was a big concern for you as, you know, undesirables. You can't let them in and see who they actually are until they actually get inside the house. On a new build, what are your plans? Like I see that there's a double-door system. Are there any other security features that would help keep the youth safe from, I guess, predatory other people in society?
Yeah, I mean, just the increase in terms of cameras both interior and exterior. The entrances is really is huge for us. I mean, when we look at our current building, you walk in the door and you're into the building, which is, the risk there becomes often more so, especially if we have kids that we have in the building that we are holding safe. You know, protects them from possibly families or individuals that are attempting to get them elsewhere. So that's a big, that entryway is, is huge for us, that, that security of an entryway. If you've been and even, you walk in and it's stairs. And so, you know, the fact that nobody's gone, stairs is, is quite, is kind of impressive to me. But yeah, that's the big piece. And then just different, different accesses in the building. We'll be able to have, you know, this floor is not in use, so there's no access to it. So just being able to do some of those things as well. Security is, is one of our, really is our big, big piece. And especially as, you know, the issues and the situations that a lot of our kids are unfortunately being pulled into. That security becomes very important. We've seen an increase in prostitution. We've seen an increase in trafficking. We've seen, and, and that's not, you know, new information, but that's something that we're really being very aware of. We've been working even with the National Trafficking Hotline that started this year. We've been working with them and making sure that we are a safe spot if somebody contacts that's needing to be secured. The security is going to be a very large part of our conversation as we move into the final planning.
Also the new building, Chris, we can probably put mag locks on the doors so that it gives you the, to lock outdoors. So you can't have anybody internally going and opening a door at the back for somebody else to get in. So, but that vestibule will be a huge thing.
Beautiful. Okay, thank you very much. I have two more questions. If there's no one else in the queue, I'd love to ask them if I could.
Go ahead, Counselor Thiessen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just one quick question, wheelchair accessibility. Have you ever had to turn away any youth due to not being wheelchair accessible?
We haven't, thankfully. We have not. But certainly not something we want to be able to do. We would have to turn them away. There's no way to get into the building on a wheelchair. Thankfully, we haven't.
Okay, yeah, that was just a curiosity there. And then the, the other question that I had is just going through your budget on the back, back pages of, I guess, your penises here in the business plan. It appears, yeah, there's an expectation of ongoing continued operational support to what the city's been doing for $110,000 over the past years. I know last year during the budget time, there's a bit of a slip and council pounded their fists on the table as hard as they could, made sure it got put back in there. How, I guess this is just a hypothetical, but what if that money wasn't there? How big of an impact is that to Sunrise House?
That would be a very large impact. I mean, we're very fortunate to have one good, a good fundraiser every year, which we're grateful for. But because of what we're doing and the work that we're doing, we can never run in a deficit because our needs change so quickly all the time. So to lose those, those, those funding amounts and having to just rely on those fundraiser dollars would, I mean, it would, it would impede our work. We often have to change directions very quickly. Sometimes we have to increase staff very quickly because of needs of our, of our youth. So that, that funding is, is critical to us.
Okay, thank you for your button list.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. I just wondered if you could clarify the request. So I heard that you're looking for $500,000 of total support from the city of Grand Prairie. And obviously, facilities located within the city, there are other things the city can do in addition to cash. So can you clear, just clarify that breakdown again? It went by pretty quickly.
Yeah, so we did an estimate, we worked with John Fulcher at Soto to work out an estimate of what the development permits, building permits, and the tax, and property tax of five years would, would look like, which left us at that, that $383,000.
So that's the, basically the cash request.
That's the cash request. That's correct. Yeah, we certainly want to recognize that there's, there are those other pieces that, that we are going to need that support and ongoing with. So that's how we work that into that number.
Okay, great. Thanks for the clarity. I don't see anybody else in the queue, then, then thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Thank you for you being here. So council, that concludes our delegation portion of our agenda. We'll move on to business arising. We had three different presentations. The one from Mr. Patron, from Ms. Charbonneau, and from Sunrise House. I would look for some motions on each of those, either to receive for information or to direct them to administration as appropriate. Counselor Friesen.
I'd like to move that we accept the presentation from Rob Patron for information.
Thanks very much. Counsel Friesen, any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Given. I would, in regards to our second delegation by Ms. Charbonneau, I would move that we, we, council, send their requests, in particular for the Flags for Remembrance, as well as housing options for veterans and Homes for Heroes to the most appropriate standing committee for further discussion.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Motion to refer to the appropriate standing committee. Any discussion or debate on those two motions? Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So just like some clarity, are you, are you hoping that a staff report comes with this or we just have a discussion in the committee before directing any staff work?
Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Counsel Bressi. I would, I would probably be looking for a staff report, at least in regards for the Flags for Remembrance. It seems like I, I feel like that's something that we might be able to do and we should have a bit of a discussion. And when we're talking about appropriate lands or where to put flags if we were going to proceed with it, I think it requires a fulsome discussion and a little bit of research, so I would look there. In regards to the, the Homes for Heroes, I'm not sure. Actually, no, I, I think we might be able to accept that for information, maybe no report on that one. From what I heard from, from our delegate, that there's two locally and three in Peace River. Doesn't seem like a large impact, but we may be able to address this through our housing strategy. So I guess I would just move that, with that in mind, to have the Flags for Remembrance brought to the most appropriate standing committee.
So, so the motion then is specific to that portion?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion or debate on Counsel Thiessen's motion? Seeing none. I, I wonder, council, if this is the kind of thing that we could refer to administration to have a discussion with Ms. Charbonneau and bring some, you know, bring something back less formally. I think, you know, we have some time before next year. I'm kind of inclined to vote against this. I think giving administration the ability to have a conversation with Ms. Charbonneau to, to see what sort of details she could bring forward might be more productive without sort of it showing up two weeks from now on a committee agenda. So I was about to hit the vote and then vote against it just on principle, but I thought, no, I might as well just actually say that. I won't support the motion because I think we could probably accomplish the same thing by encouraging administration to have that conversation and, and update council more informally. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. I would, I would assume that if we're going to generate a report with anything, we would do appropriate research in the matter. And seeing as Ms. Charbonneau has brought this up, I would, I was already assuming that that conversation would transpire. There's also the mayor of Sylvan Lake, Sean McIntyre, who we could easily get in contact with and have that discussion from there. I don't see it as being a, a big issue and could generate enough information in reports to make it worthwhile.
Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you. It, it seems to me that you guys are asking the same thing, but apparently you're not. So can I get clarity on what the motion is? Because maybe I'm miss, maybe I'm the one misunderstanding it.
Sure. How did you capture that to our city clerk? Or maybe Counsel Thiessen, if you'd like to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, let me clarify because I think I tried to bundle all the issues all into one. But let's just, the motion is, is to send, or bring a report back to the appropriate standing committee on Flags for Remembrance and what, and any potential lands or opportunities that the city could do with this.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Thiessen, for that clarity. So we've all heard the motion. If there isn't any other discussion or debate, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry. Counselor O'Toole.
Mayor Given, we had a delegation earlier in the day and I would just like to make a motion that we include the GPRC Students Union, Students Administration.
Association.
Association. The words are there. They're just coming out wrong. To be included in our contact list for when we do community impact and, and consultations.
Okay, so a motion requesting administration identify them as a group for?
Yes.
Specifically for circulation on community consultation initiatives? Okay. Okay. Any discussion or debate? Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Counselor O'Toole. I'm just kind of confused by how broad or specific this is in terms of, I really support the idea of, now that they've reached out to us, I'd like us to be more proactive in asking student association for their input on things that affect them. But also, I think there's some things we do that probably don't affect them. For example, I think we're going to be probably consulting pretty soon on processes for building homes. And that's something where they likely don't need to be circulated on. So is, just specifically, what are we directing administration to do with this?
Counsel, Counselor O'Toole, just have to get your microphone.
Actually, they did ask about housing. And I think that we can send out requests for their presence. If they don't feel there's a need to be involved in that, then they can not accept it. So they're on a list, put it out, just like the Chamber of Commerce, like UDI, anything like that. They can reply either email that they're concerned or they can come to an open house or discussion panel, whatever.
Okay. Counselor Bressi.
I regret that I'm going to be voting against this motion. It's just too broad, it's just too broad for me. I think there's a lot of things the city does consultation on that we don't need to circulate them on. For example, when we're talking about housing, affordable housing, absolutely need to circulate them on. When we're talking to the Developers Institute about how does our permitting process work and is it smooth or not? I don't think we need to circulate them on that. And I think that it's, I'm just worried about us being too, I'm worried about us being too prescriptive on our administration. And it's kind of funny to give direction on one group's getting circulated on things we do when we haven't done that for other groups. So I think it would be great. I hope we keep on asking when we're talking about things that are relevant to the Students Union. What has, what has the Students Union's involvement in this been? I think it would be great if sometime we had more conversation about our general expectations when it comes to stakeholder engagement. Because, sorry, I don't think we have talked about enough about it, council. But unfortunately, as much as I really want to involve the Student Union more, this is a motion I could support because I think it's just too broad.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. I see our chief of staff has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would just speak to the city's approach on engagement. And our approach is to, to look at which groups are most affected. This would be a different, a different way of doing business to start a global list for us to start sending every communication out to. We do hear that this group would have some valuable input on specific consultations, including some that are ongoing, and we'll, and we'll definitely reach out to them. But creating a master But creating a master list of, uh, sending all things out would be a significant departure from our current, uh, procedures.
Thank you, Councilor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I, um, completely support Councilor Tool's initiative. However, um, following the chief of staff's comments and Council Bressi's comments, I'll just suggest an amendment, uh, that may be beneficial. So I would amend that, uh, um, the motion say that, uh, direct administration to include GPRC SA in any applicable and relevant communication going forward. Thank you. So basically, if you add the words relevant and applicable, then I would assume that they'll be included in the relevant and applicable uh, initiatives that the city may, uh, already have a sort of database that they reach out to.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Council Thieson.
Hopefully I have a relevant and applicable comment, uh, to, to that. Um, from what I heard from the delegation earlier today is that they were circulated on the affordable housing strategy. Uh, just according to the VP, it came a little late and, uh, they couldn't make it accommodate within their schedule. So I do think our administration is doing their due diligence in, in reaching out to the appropriate, uh, stakeholders. Um, so, uh, in saying that, I, I don't think I could support either of these motions cause I think our administration is doing, doing quite a good job of, uh, communicating with those stakeholders. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Thieson. Uh, I'll just say that I think, uh, from time to time, on an issue by issue basis, council has, uh, directed administration to seek the feedback of specific identified groups. Um, I think this motion is generally in line with that, saying that we would like this to be a group that we, that we put on a regular circu, circulation. Um, I don't, I don't believe the city of Grand Prairie has a master list. Um, and, and I think we have that flexibility to identify the things that are most relevant to, um, different parties. I think that this is signals councils, would signal council's intention to say this is a group that we would like to hear from more regularly. And I trust administration doesn't need to build an Excel spreadsheet, uh, to track the, the groups that council said that about. And I believe that in the future, council will continue to identify other groups that we think might be relevant on an issue by issue basis. So, um, I support the motion. Um, I really would take it as more symbolic in nature than anything else. And maybe more of an omnibus motion rather than just on an issue by issue, every time something comes up, us remembering and have to say, oh yeah, and the Students Association, which unfortunately hasn't happened in the past. Um, so I, I would support the motion, um, but I really would expect that administration would take it as more symbolic in nature, uh, rather than, uh, sort of creating a specific list of groups and then, um, starting to see groups lobbying to get on the list. But yeah, so I, I will support the motion. Council Bressi.
Great, thank you. While, while you're talking about education, I'll mention that this might be parsnikety and, uh, pedantic. But I ca, I can't support this, support this motion even though I really appreciate the intent behind it. Cause to me, it seems like it is a symbolic motion. And if we're going to make a symbolic motion, let's be clear about what we're doing. Now, I'd support a motion that was something like council affirms the importance, uh, of working with the Student Association going forward. Or if we were clear that we were, if we're just clear we're affirming a value we have, great, I'd a hundred percent support that. But I think if we're actually going to give direction to administration, let's actually give direction to administration. I can't support us making a motion giving direction that there's actually no actions coming out of it. There's no way to measure it. There's no way to see if our actions have been followed up onto, to our satisfaction. So like I said, maybe it's pedantic of me, but if we're going to make a symbolic motion, it's appropriate for council to do. I actually think we should maybe do more of those to affirm the values we have, but let's be clear about what we're doing. So I can't support the motion as is, but I sure hope we think about the Student Association more and we work with them even closer.
Okay, thanks, Council Bressi. Uh, I don't see anybody else in the queue. So then I will. Uh, so we had, um, Council Clayton's amendment. Um, and so I will call for the vote on Council Clayton's amendment, which was, uh, really to highlight sort of the, the relevant and applicable portion. Any discussion or debate on that? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Now we have the vote on the main motion, uh, as amended, uh, which does, uh, yeah, include that relevant and applicable amendment. Any discussion or debate on that? I would just suggest that that amendment, uh, gives administration some pretty wide latitude on how they choose to act on this motion. Um, so I would encourage councils to consider supporting it. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Uh, that motion does carry. Uh, was there any other business arising from our delegations? Council Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, in regards to our last delegation from the Centre for Youth Emergency Shelter, there was a clear ask in a, in a business plan presented to council that we are all privy to, to look over. Uh, so with that being said, I would move that, uh, council will move the request by Sunrise House Youth Emergency Shelter to budget deliberations. And just to speak to this, uh, motion, uh, it is happening next week. I know it's kind of a curve ball, but we do have a lot of, uh, we do have some capital available in our housing reserves. And, uh, and I think it's in a bit of a sum figure. Uh, we'll get all that, uh, when our budget comes. But, uh, something to definitely talk about as a request is for this upcoming spring. So I think it'd be a relevant topic to discuss and debate, uh, as we do our budget.
Thanks, Council Thieson. So a specific motion to refer to budget, at, at that time, council would be able to see it in context of the overall budget and be able to make a determination about how it may or may not fit. Um, any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on the referral motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And were there any other delegations that we hadn't addressed in the delegation business? I don't see anybody ringing in. Uh, if not, then we'll move on to council member reports. And council, I think we may have only had one, uh, the Inter-City Forum on Social Policy. Councilor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. While I got to attend my very last intercity forum of social policy, now that Council Freezen's taken that over, much to my chagrin, cause that was the first actually really good intercity forum policy we had. I think it's going to be really good going forward. So you're welcome, I fixed it for you. Uh, I, it was, we had Mr. Sa, Minister Sonny, the Minister of Community and Social Services, came and talked to us. We had a really good, long, frank conversation with her. She gave us about 90 minutes of time, which was really appreciated. And, uh, big conversation that kept on coming up was this phrase that the ministry wants to leverage civil society. And that's something that a few of us had heard a few different places. And the minister brought it up herself and then we asked, well, what do you mean by leverage civil society? Said, well, we know we want to do it, but we're still actually, to be perfectly honest, figuring out exactly what that looks like and what it means. And it was really fun to get to say, well, I've got an example from Grand Prairie that might be what you're talking about. And get to share with her, the Downtown Association raising Rotary money to support a nonprofit doing street outreach in partnership with the city. And it was a fun story to, a fun story to share that she asked a number of questions about and she got really excited about. So it was great that, it was great to be able to brag about Grand Prairie and show that we are leading, that we are leading the way. Uh, and I think that is the conversation that, of the whole day that was worth, was worth highlighting to council. In terms of, it was the day after the budget dropped, so we were all still struggling to understand it. And we had lots of questions for the minister about how the budget would, would impact her ministry. And that was still very unclear at the point, but this leveraging, leveraging civil society came up again and again and again. And I know there's going to be a lot of focus, it sounds like, in terms of partnering with organizations that are getting significant volunteer help and significant financial support in the community and also through municipal government. So I don't know what impact that might have on our nonprofit sector. I think that we tend to be a more philanthropic communities than most. So hopefully that means we actually ride through any hard budget choices better than other communities. So I, we don't know what the impacts of these are going to be, but I think it's aware, it's worth being aware that that's the language that this ministry's starting to use.
Thanks very much, Council Bressi. Um, I think then we'll start our council roundtable and we'll start with Council Thieson.
Somehow I kind of figured it was going to start with me, so let's, uh, get the obvious out of the way. Uh, yeah, it looks like I'm part of the Legion of Doom from the old WWF era. Uh, but it was all for a good cause, uh, minus the face paint. Uh, I took part in the Pards, uh, Dine and Dash event this past Saturday. Uh, part of the agreement was, is, uh, last year they had a little bit of success, about a thousand dollars worth of success in shaving my hair on the impromptu. So they asked if I would do it, uh, as part of the surprise auction item. So the plan devised was to section off my hair into five different parts and to have members within the audience to shave off those parts and to bid to shave off of those parts. Well, the person who bid to shave off the right side of my head opted to not shave it at all and wanted me to keep it for a whole year. So that took a bit of negotiation. So for the next 30 days, I'm going to have this tuft of hair either tucked back nicely or drawn up nice and weird. I'm sorry, council, I know I'm deputy mayor status, so this is my apology to the community, but it's a good conversation piece as we go out to different events. Uh, other than that, uh, my, uh, council schedule was, uh, very, very full these last two weeks. Uh, I'm not going to bore you with any of the details. I know a lot of you were at some of the events, but I did want to bring something that I received, uh, as a presentation to council, uh, back on May the 11th. Uh, it was, uh, at an event for the Legion. It was one of Wayne Drysdale's last speaking events as a MLA, uh, even though he wasn't MLA at the time, but he was booked as the MLA. Uh, and it was a celebration of the Legion's 100 years in our community. Uh, and with that being said, I know we're all going to be going out to different events for Remembrance Day, uh, whether we're going to Anavets, the Senataph, or with the Legion. Um, but this is a small presentation, uh, made by legionnaires at the Centre for Creative Arts. A hundred years of the Legion in Grand Prairie as of May the 11th. It was presented to me and somehow I got lost under a pile of papers on my desk. And then I discovered it a few weeks ago and I thought the week before Remembrance Day would be a good time to present it to council. So council, now you have something extra to talk about, uh, and thank the Legion for being active and in service in our community for the past 100 years. Uh, cause we're still in their 100th year celebration here. So with that being said, I'll pass the mic on. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Thieson. Councilor Platt.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. For me, I think the highlight was, and I know it wasn't an exciting one, but it was the Aqua Terra 101 finance that we did with them. I really appreciate that Aqua Terra is trying to get more transparency and that I, and that, that our, our council has gotten an opportunity to speak more to Aqua Terra about what we want it to look like in the future. I know for me personally, I want to see us increase our dividends and look at some other things. So, um, I really, uh, again, want to thank Aqua Terra for letting their shareholders have more conversations regarding that.
Council Freezen.
Thank you. I do want to, uh, thank the chamber for the Small Business Week, uh, activities that went on. There was the, um, uh, Women in Business Lunch and there was the awards, of course, which I want to offer my congratulations to each of the, um, individuals, organizations and businesses that won awards, uh, as well as the, um, yeah, it's gone out of my head, what the other, oh, the, uh, lunch with Rotary as well, which is always an enjoyable time. Um, lots of fun. And we had a fantastic presentation at that by, uh, Wendy Bosch from the Downtown Association. I'd also like to shout out to the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie. I attended Spectacular Art the other night and it really was a fantastic, it was the annual art auction, but done with a, um, performing circus-like, uh, atmosphere. And it was really a fantastic and fun time, very artistic as one would expect, uh, a little edgy, which was exciting to see in Grand Prairie. So had a good time there. And one more thing that I want to, um, point out, that this, I, I didn't know it, um, at the time, but I, uh, we, we hosted actually at, at our building, we hosted, um, Ghost Stories of Grand Prairie. And I compiled stories from three different, um, three different kinds of stories from here in Grand Prairie and a little bit in the region as well. And that was as a fundraiser for the archives. And we raised about $2,000 for the archives for an inaugural event with, um, um, a total of about 50 people attending. So it was really, really exceeded our expectations. We were delighted. Um, but what I want to say about that is that, um, the executive director and board attended, uh, or a few board members attended. And it was the very first time ever that an, another organization put something together as a fundraiser for the archives. So, you know, they've never had someone throw together a beef on a bun lunch with proceeds going to. They've never had someone throw anything together for them. So they were absolutely delighted that we were able to do that for them. And, uh, and then, um, I had planned it prior to being, uh, put on to reshuffled or shuffled, I guess, onto the archives, uh, to represent the council and archives. So I'm really looking forward and, uh, expect to go into that first board meeting with a check presentation, as well as it being my first board meeting. Thank you.
That'll be a good introduction. Thanks, Council Freezen. Councilman Minhass.
Well, there you go. Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, I think a few things already mentioned and, uh, one thing, uh, we went to with my colleagues, uh, Kevin Tool and Dylan at the Scro Cro fundraising, that was a very interesting one. It was great. And for me to more excitement was the seven gen shovel digging. Thank you, Bill Mayor Given, and also the school, comp school thing. Made me more excited during the hard time for the economy and there's still something going in Grand Prairie that was a lot positive to me. And also I'd like to request to everybody, you know, like we do in our first Guru, Nanak Dev, 550 years birthday is November 12th. We're doing some in our church that day. And then also we're doing 15, 16, 17, three day reading our Bible. And everybody will, will come to there and food will be available. And we appreciate that, that's a big thing for us in our Sikh community all over in the world. And they're doing big thing, but we are very small in Grand Prairie. We can do what the rest of they can do themselves. So I'm pleased to invite everybody who can come and eat the food and talk to people and get to know our Sikh religion a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Minhass. Councilor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, a couple of things, uh, that I wanted to highlight tonight. Um, I had an opportunity to attend an orientation for, uh, the Community Advisory Board on Homelessness, one of my new committees. So that was a, a really informative lunch, lunch opportunity or coffee opportunity that I had with the chair of, uh, the committee as well as, um, administration. So I, I really appreciated that, taking that time and getting me up to speed on, um, you know, the initiatives that that organization does. Um, I also attended, um, the multi-stakeholder IDP workshop that many other counselors, I guess, actually no, just the mayor and I were at. Um, it was nice to, um, hear stakeholders in the region and, and their thoughts as we, um, head into a new IDP process, um, with the county. So it was a, it was a, a long day because we had done our previous meeting, uh, with county council. And then we went into the stakeholder, uh, workshop and, but it was, it was some valuable information in my opinion. Today though, I want to mostly highlight an opportunity that I had to attend the Alberta Recreation and Park Association Conference. Uh, it was, um, on October 24th and it was in the lovely community of Lake Louise, which is always, you know, extra bonus. But there was many things that I, I really, uh, took away from that conference. And, and sometimes you go to a conference and you, you know, you might get, um, uh, sort of a tidbit here and a, and sort of a really cool idea here. But it was one of the first conferences that I've been to in a long time where I truly took away multiple things. In the beginning, uh, the, one of the opening speakers was from Dr. Nicole Cobbs Reed. And she talked about utilizing recreational facilities and programs to support wellness. And the specific example of this was working with, um, cancer, um, survivors and cancer, um, people that have cancer and recreation and what we can do to sort of adapt to make, uh, good use of existing facilities and, uh, inclusive use for recreation for people with cancer. It was a really, uh, it was a really great idea. And I thought that potentially it was something that, um, through regional cooperation, that we could look to host in multiple, uh, facilities. It, uh, talked about sometimes the recreation takes place in an empty school. Sometimes it might take place in, in a town hall. Sometimes it might take place on, you know, the curling club with no ice in it. And it was just a really good use of facilities, uh, across the region that they had worked in, in Alberta. So I thought it was great. The second session that I, and so I thought it was doing great because I had one takeaway. In the next session I went to, I was also sort of blown away with the city of Edmonton presented on their Play in the Streets campaign. And many of you have heard about that initiative, but it really just brought to light some of the opportunities that we do with our neighborhood association and things that communities and neighborhoods can do together with the city to utilize existing, uh, infrastructure, to bring neighbors together, really low key, uh, simple planning pieces. And, and the biggest contribution that the municipality was doing was simply by potentially maybe closing the street and putting up some barricades and, and assisting on that. And the rest was all, uh, driven by initiatives from the local residents. And I thought it was a really great piece. Um, I went through an interesting session on tree management. Calgary, city of Calgary presented on their Tree Maggeden, they called it, when they had a massive amount of snow in 24 hours. And, and what that did, uh, in regards to tree inventory and, and preparing for that and emergency services, in particular with, uh, with their trees. So that was very interesting. So that was very interesting. Council Bressi and I a few years ago attended an innovative conference, and at this recreation conference, as at the same group spoke from Calgary about changing the nature of play and the play charter, the mobile adventure playground and sort of the nature play. And it was great because it was two years since Council Bressi and I had seen this, and so they had some real statistics and takeaways of how that was working and how it wasn't working. So it was also a really good piece. I had an opportunity to listen to Minister Lila here. She spoke as a Minister of Culture, multiculturalism, multiculturalism and the status of women. And as always, she was very enlightening, and it was the day after the budget, so she, you know, she had some, some great insight for the room, which was very nice. The highlight was obviously, on behalf of the Grand Prairie Regional Recreation Committee, myself, councillor Corey Beck, and councillor Anna Underwood from Wembley spoke in a session and the learning experiences and the takeaways of what we've got from the committee to date and how we got to where we are to date on the regional recreation advisory. So it was, it was a nice opportunity for us to sort of share our message and took lots of questions in regards what the takeaways were from that. And then the last sort of piece that I thought was really great is that the Lieutenant Governor of Alberta, Lois Mitchell, spoke at the closing dinner. She was, you know, she was very enlightening in how her path of, you know, working with hockey and recreation over the years had brought it to where she was today, and she sent a really positive message to the room, and so it was very nice. The only other sort of comment I wanted to say on that conference, it was the first time that they'd combined the conference with the Alberta Therapeutic Recreation Administrative and therapists, and so the conference was over 600 people and saw people that have worked for the city in the past and saw lots of familiar faces, but I strongly encourage council to consider attending it next year. It was truly a great conference, so thank you for the opportunity. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Thanks for representing the city there. Council Orto?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. A few things, sorry, my throat's not working so good today. I attended the Grand Prairie Composite High School groundbreaking. I think pretty much everybody from council was there. It was one of the times where the politicians didn't speak too long because it was miserable weather. But the new story is after four years of planning and making things happen, construction's going to start within the next month, so that's a good thing. Seven Generations, very proud to be there as well. Once again, they have opportunities to choose anywhere where they could build their head office, and they chose Grand Prairie, so that's a great boost to our economy as well, and a big thank you to them. I also attended the Finance 101 session here at City Hall with Aqua Terra. And once again, good information and the ability to learn a little bit more about how they run their business and options for us to benefit from their business. As well, I did attend the ATB Knowledge Exchange Small Business Week kickoff lunch at the ATB in town here, and it was a great event, lots of great stories being passed around in the corners, as well as a great host, the ATB, so thank you for them. And on Tuesday, the 22nd, I was part of the International Day of Peoples with Disabilities Event Planning Committee, and on December 3rd, we will have an event here in town that you're all will be getting invitation for, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Council Orto. Council Bressi?
Great, thank you. Two highlights for me was, one, councillor Minhass and I attended a really interesting education session on utilities and how they're regulated, how rates get set, and also some opportunities for potential savings by skipping the retail market, skipping the wholesale market, and going to the over-the-counter market, which is something I didn't know existed until this workshop. But there was some interesting case studies of municipalities in Alberta saving 10% to 30% on their electricity bills by pre-purchasing power a couple of years out, so excited to see if there's any potential, potential there. It was a bit of a sales pitch, so maybe it's not as impressive as it actually sounds, but I know our administration's doing a little bit of work to see if there are some savings, savings there. Something else that I'll highlight is, while I was in Calgary, I got to go to Cochrane, and I got to ride the Cochrane On-Demand Local Transit Bus, COLT for short, and it's basically Uber for public transit, where you go in an app and you say, I need to get from this stop to this stop, and it tells you when to be at your first stop and when it will have you to your second stop by, and it creates a route to get not just you, but other people in the community where they need to go. And I was on a bus with four other people. Two of them were trying it for the first time, just like me. One had been doing it for about a week, and she had, she didn't have a vehicle, she lived in Cochrane, and she'd never ridden a bus in Cochrane, and she can say enough good things about it. Driver seemed pretty happy, too, and afterwards, yeah, so it's a, it's a cool, it's a cool system. It's something that was really interesting about the app is there's the ability to add local companies into it so that the app can also dispatch cabs or other private transportation. And so if you're looking at, the bus is going to take too long, you could say, I'll pay more money for a cab, or if you take the bus to get somewhere to a party and transit's done by the time you're done the party, you can use the same source to get private transportation, transportation home. And what's really neat about it is for, from a customer perspective, it's got obvious attributes. From a local business perspective, it's got obvious advantages. It lets local businesses compete with Uber and do something that they wouldn't be able to do because they don't have the ability to create those apps on their own. Also, from a municipal perspective, you could charge a little bit of money for the private businesses to be on there, so it's a revenue generation opportunity, too. So it was a really cool system, and I know that a lot of work's being put into what's the future of Grand Prairie transit look like. This is one of many possibilities before us, but excited to see whether it's this or something else. I'm sure our transit system's going to look a lot better for users and a lot more cost-effective for taxpayers in 10 years, thanks to technology, and I'm excited to see what that might look like.
Thanks, Council Bressi. I'll be brief. Last week, I was in Edmonton for a few days to attend an AUMA board meeting. I also attended by conference call, an AMSC Board of Governors meeting. While I was in Edmonton, I, with other members of council, was at the Economic Developers of Alberta Conference that was sponsored by the Tri-Municipal Industrial Project. I was there to support Reeve Dale as he was letting the conference attendees know about the work that's been happening up here. And before I left Edmonton, I had an opportunity to meet with our Director Glavin and Rebecca Lee from our Economic Development Department to welcome some new landowners to the city of Grand Prairie. As has been noted in local media, Melkor Developments has taken a pretty significant stake in the multiple millions of dollars, I believe, about 30 or 54 million, $54 million as they bought the Rio Can properties on the west side and sort of Westgate Plaza. So it was a pleasure to meet with their leadership team to sort of provide a warm welcome as they make this significant investment in our community, and they were very bullish on the future of Grand Prairie, and they're looking forward to making some improvements in that area, which I think the community will appreciate. And in addition to that, the city manager and I were at the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum for a meeting with the some representatives of the Grand Prairie Regional College Board of Directors as they look to build out their ownership linkage. So they really see the community as the owners of Grand Prairie Regional College, and this engagement was a part of, a part of that discussion with us as a stakeholder. There was myself, city manager Galante, as well as representatives from other municipalities in the region. And in addition to that, there was another event that I attended on behalf of council. My arm got a little bit sore, but it was a pleasure to be at the signing agreement for our QP local. So the city of Grand Prairie and QP, as council knows, we recently ratified that contract, and so we did have a formal signing ceremony. You wouldn't believe the number of documents that need to be signed to conclude that agreement, but at that meeting, I said the same thing that I'm about to say, and I just want to recognize both sides of that negotiating team, both our city administration on behalf of management, as well as the QP local and their representatives. It's no small task when you have the diversity of workers and issues and concerns, and you have the imperative that council's put forward to our administration to ensure that we're watching our bottom-line spending. I think the teams work together in good faith, really recognizing that there's a common interest in serving the residents of Grand Prairie, and so I just want to pass on my congratulations to all the staff members that led that on behalf of management and to our QP employees who represented labor's interests in that. It was a pleasure to be able to attend that signing. And then again, congratulations, Grand Prairie Public School Board, for their kickoff of their construction project, the replacement for the Grand Prairie Composite High School, and thanks to Seven Generations Energy for their investment and continued commitment to our community as they had the groundbreaking for their new headquarters on the west side. And with that, we'll call our council meeting adjourned.